Without further ado, I would like to welcome our seventh district candidates. There's a third candidate who could be here tonight with more about her voting back. So one of our candidates is Estegi Alobas. Please give her a round of applause. And our other candidate is Emily Alobos. Please give her a round of applause. You said you have executive assistant with the Oklahoma Secretary of State. She's a former Wisconsin property contractor with the Denver D.B. Fisher campaign. Actually, she's CPS alone. And was also a CPS graduate, she's a state woman. Previously, she was a county actually, and she's a volunteer at CPS schools. So we're going to get started with a question about how do you engage with your these communities that you're working for. In your district, the seventh district, there are seventy-nine schools. There are local school councils for each school. We're wondering, how do you see yourself engaging with these local school councils, with these principals, and making sure you're addressing all of these schools? Ms. Lobos will start with you. I already messed up. We're supposed to do that open remarks first. So we're going to come to the end first. Ms. Lobos will start with you.
You don't have to say it.
I'm going to start with Emily.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for the awareness to be banned and for the families to be here to learn more about your options for the election. As mentioned, my name is Estegi Alobos. I was a priest in Gilson, and now live in H. Park. Very good at helping the community. I have a volunteer role for working every community, part of the seventh district. I come from Halloween. My parents are immigrants, and we come from many people that came to this policy seeking the American dream, like many of our individuals who want to live in this district. I've had the opportunity to attend public schools, Stanford, and the Eagle Boys, and then Paul University after graduation from the Paul. I knew that I wanted to change my community, studying as an organizer in Little Village, working with parent leaders and students, running after-school programs for the area, working alongside the traditional school, self-centered, striking families, and later on, volunteering also with the Eagle Boys. My career has been driven for public service, and how can we help improve our communities, and also be able to build upon what we already have. And that's why we're in the intention of having a strong voice advocate for our working class families in this district, our children, and that we don't get a worst scene. And we have been for so many years, being a strong advocate at the city, and also that individual advocate for all of us throughout the state.
Ms. Alobos.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. Thank you to all of us elected, making this together. Every now and then, I was born in Mexico. I raised here in multiple weekends in Chicago, which you know, we haven't had in a while for us, right? I also was at multiple CPS schools. And I think I also got graduated from this wonderful high school, Kiri. Last time I was here, I was attending Florida. So it's kind of nice to be able to come back here, even if it's only for a moment, to help public schools. I'm a proud mom for people who are still here in the state, to the rural, to the minors. And I can identify the turmoil and the headaches that our parents are facing when it comes to getting the donations, getting the support and help. You know, I struggled myself with the image. It was quite difficult to get into the whole English aspect, or even know what I remember Spanish. And you know, just trying to be sure that we can identify some of the issues. And it can definitely be that individual, since I am facing the worst of myself. I'm Latin modern, I also have a deep impression of American. Right, I think one of my strengths is saying the sentence. And I'm quite familiar with how a lot of this, um, citizens are, are thinking, how we can make this happen. And I'm very happy, like, to see that you guys are still here, because we need to make sure that we are aware, and making sure that the best qualified and active places to see that's an advocate for all the kids in Madison. Thank you.
Thank you both. And as I previously said, we're going to go with our first question. How do you engage with all of these schools in your district? How do you engage local school councils, state schools, parents, and representatives in this district? Ms. Lobos will start with you.
Thank you for the question. We've seen that I already had experience working with many schools in the district. I have also had experience working with our government and dental specialists, with our local school community networks here in the area. And I believe it will be enhancing those communities where we can develop local school councils, principals, and also our community, in the near future. Does not forget about comparing measures of writing any physical law or medical papers. So it's making sure those conversations are continued to be had, something that I've done for fifteen, almost fifteen years now, at a community level, and I hope that can now protect throughout the seventh district.
As a mind, I have been required very much of all the case education, and also as younger. You know, I was taught that we need to reach for the free to park, and continue to discover better education for our kids. Whether it's in my office, I've made sure that we're successful, or we need to make sure that we have more of the representation of our LSCs. They are, uh, the eyes, and in our schools, you know, we cannot lose their physical, you know, location. So they're able to come around our LSCs, be able to talk about all the others, and all their nonprofit pockets, you know, that will be ready to start the need for that education.
Thank you both. And I want to move on to some hot topics that have been popping in the news that we've been writing about over the past few months. And I want to ask you probably yes or no questions. So please just yes or no, and I'll give you an opportunity to answer a little bit more than that. And so first, there's been a disagreement between Chicago Public Schools CEO, Pedro Martinez, and Mayor Brandon Johnson, who are having a little budget deficit this year. Do you support taking out a short-term loan to cover that budget gap? Yes or no? Ms. Lobos will start with you.
No, definitely not.
And Ms. Lobos?
No.
Do you believe CPS CEO Pedro Martinez should keep his job? Yes or no? Ms. Lobos?
Yes.
And Ms. Lobos?
Yes.
And so like we said, CPS is basically a substantial budget deficit. It's focused this year that has expected to open up about three hundred million dollar deficit. And in the future years, there's about a half billion dollar deficit in several years. If you run for today, how would you address this deficit? And I want you to be specific, and what funding mechanisms you would use to try to fill out that budget gap? And Ms. Lobos will start with you.
Sure. One of the reasons that we're not seeing a loan, we take out a loan is because we have some kind of income that's open in revenue coming in. And this is not anything that we have with our Chicago Public Schools. So getting ourselves more in that, you were already at, is definitely not canceled. I will see that for working in collaboration with other nonprofits, setting up for some kind of other support. And also TIPS, TIPS have a large amount of money that keeps them deviating onto our taxpayers. And they keep taking money away from our public schools. Not only our public schools, but also from our corporate parts. And we need to make sure that we bring that money back. You know, it wasn't a temporary for TIPS, and it's not working for us. And we need to make sure that we bring that money back to our communities. And there's, there's, sky for them to go and do with those big funds that are available to put their back for our, that we have been working so hard.
Any other questions?
No, it's a difficult round situation, what is happening in the world, right? And I just want to imagine that my answer to no to loan is the piece of information that I have, which is publicly available, the CRV's, that reporters are being able to board, and that's what I'm doing, right? So I don't have the briefies, I have the current board, yes. So based on that information, it's no. Because we got to think the long term, right? We cannot just do mandates, because that's how we got into where we are right now. We need short-term solutions. We got to figure out what is ahead. But if you got the short term, right? Is looking at innovative partnerships, whether it be with a nonprofit sector, or local philanthropy, or either the trades, right? And I'm also speaking from experience. My work in Little Village, working with some of these schools, developing after-school programming, and also, for example, counseling for the teachers in the land as a family as well, was not necessarily through CPS budget. It was partnerships with local nonprofits that are experts in those areas. So we need to go through building those partnerships. I would also say, long term, we need to focus on leveraging relationships that we have already in this area. I have over, fortunately, over twelve thousand legislators already. Also, we have worked with our current president and administration. It's how we build those relationships, and within their power, they can also support Chicago Public Schools. And again, I have that throughout the state, at the center of the city.
Thank you for those answers. And Ms. Lobos, you've been a force in the child teacher union. Ms. Lobos, do you identify a couple groups that are advocates for charter schools? They have, they're backed by business groups that oppose the union. So I want to ask you both, how do you engage with local cities? As a big stakeholder, both in the city, politics, kind of state schools? And Ms. Lobos will start with you.
I will add that the Chicago Teachers Union is one of the individuals that have been supporting me. I also have many different congressmen, many citizens to me, Garcia. Twelve plus legislators, all their folks. And also, and then the different organizations that have been grass roots and work closely with the community, and also the Chicago Federation of Labor, because we understand that our seventh district is a working class. It's how we leverage those relationships with labor. Now, the Chicago Teachers Union, but also for example, SDU, right? Teenagers, because they are the union of staff that are employed by Chicago Public Schools. And for me, what I've written to the table, and what I've been able to, in my fifty-plus career professional, is building in collaboration. And we got to think about, at the end of the day, we are responsible, and we need to be transparent and accountable to the community. And that's the one that we are accountable to, to the community that's helping we dawn up for the individual, we impact their decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Lobos. And I'd be kind of, when you see the role of delivering at charter schools for this time, actually, someone needs to hear your side back from you.
The role of the union, are they charter schools? Well, for the role of the union, they are here to help support our labor, look out for our teachers. And you know, they have had good interests in the past. Unfortunately, with, you know, the vision, the focus that they lost. For charter schools, I am grateful that they have been supporting me, because there's no way I've really been able to get as far as I have. They have been very local as far as supporting me with my decisions, and with me speaking with what I want, what I'm researching. And this is something that I'm hoping to continue to do regardless, with everyone that has been wanting to support me. I don't like this Jesus touch, in our relationship, that whatever decision is made at the end of the day, is to be all our kids first. And we know this is in both our parents and our children.
Thank you both. And we recently saw CPS and for education, and for teachers who recently resigned. They adopted a buy-in strategic plan. They call for focus on strengthening the schools. They call for all kids to learn more language. And once CPS can understand the school success in a lot of areas, we have touchstones. Do you support this strategic plan, when you've been voting for it? If so, what are its greatest strengths? If not, what are some weaknesses? And Ms. Lobos will start with you.
Hi, the first time I heard, I loved it. I can lie, but there's also a lot of questions. How are we realistically maintaining this? What is the actual budget to obtain this? We have a lot of deficits right now. So we need to make sure that, um, we set up a plan that we also send us a teaching way, just in a way, how to get there, without always trying to implement tax studies, so we're asking for more money. We need to be more conscious of how we're actually spending that money, and starting fights, you know? There's some other schools that are functioning better than others with less class. So we need to make sure that we continue looking for a strategic way to actually get to that plan, because it does sound great, but the way that it's executed, we have to be careful with it.
I believe that your strategic plan is, you know, who the director should start with, right? On the speaking, I'm going to focus on neighborhood schools, which I believe, you know, is children should have, or our students should have to apply to the kind of to also a good quality school, or have access to the programs that they need. There are some areas, right, that need to be explored, and look at how we can actually make that happen. Your solution now is to figure out how we can execute it, and we need to step on the long term, right? And the other part is also focus on the tool language, which should become a special education, which you know, is definitely needed, because I've been here, I've gone with moms in our city, and parents who have, hey, my child has a knee injury, and I'm honest with you, I have a splat here and stuff like that. So I need to go to the ortho, that's not fair for these families.
Thank you both. And we see there's just a wide range of people in the crowd here. Something that is important to note is their constituents. They include parents who send their kids to neighborhood public schools, also parents who go to charter schools, who kids who are still in the middle of magnet schools. There are also parents who send their kids to private schools, and people who are too young to have kids, or which kids already graduated. These are all going to be your constituents, who are voting for you and who you represent. How do you balance all of those different needs and interests as school board candidate, and if you're to be elected to the school or matter? Ms. Lobos will start with you.
Well, I think that ultimately makes the seventh district and our communities unique and rich, because we are very diverse. And also, the, you know, looking at each school, the needs are very diverse. We can have a large set of support of public schools. Some schools can need more support the next time the C.E.R. we have, right? They're in a different area. That being said, for me, it's a happy goal status, and having, with community members. If a family is choosing, for example, a charter school, families that are in the local neighborhood, is having their needs. Let's find out why. Why is local school not meeting their needs? Why don't you just be changing what's in their needs? Some of their problems, particularly, we have abandoned schools, right? Some of them are well-known and very well-established. And it's kind of, you know, for example, people low-known throughout the, throughout the United States, right? And keeping that option for the difference that one pursue in those schools. But also, let's make sure that our students and mothers, they get into their neighborhood schools, that they have access to good quality education.
As I mentioned, we do have a very diverse district. We have a district that has the largest feature, American, yeah. And we need to make sure that we listen to every single member, every single school, because the needs and wants, they are depending on where they are located. I'm sorry, I spaced out for a second. Um, I want to make sure that we continue having goals for the communications with LSCs, which means our parents. The focus for me has seemed to be with a balanced communication, regardless of the type of student that they are. They're, they're asking a bit off say, to, to only focus on the local community, the school, the local schools, and not considering our charter schools, copying them, they're not part of the community, which I'm very proud now can be seen that. When they are serving our children, our community, our parents, and they have been prospered more than just education. So I'm looking to support all of our schools. If our parents are saying that we need that, we need to listen to that, and we need to go ahead to add any more positive issues to that.
On top of your charter schools, you have a question here in the cloud that both asked. It's about several charter schools. And they recently announced that they're going to close seven of their fifteen campuses. Four of those schools are in the two districts that we're here listening from, the next seven of the eight districts. How can you help? What would you do in this case? In terms of, there's been proposals to create new schools or CPS, uh, direction, or topics of serial, like keeping them open? Or do you think the charter educators should go out and play? We'll start with Ms. Lobos.
So when you heard about this, I was quite sad. You know, as I mentioned, I want to support our schools. And it's quite refreshing to see the union now okaying a set of that policy when we have not been allocating funds properly to that. We are at that and supporting that, the way that we are supporting our most local public schools. Our public school, traditional public schools have decreased in attendance, decreased in number of students, and that. And yet, we continue to feel reminded that, again, we don't recognize the contributions and these that our students have gained from charter schools, from that, these schools. I'm looking to work, I'm hoping that, and I know that they can stretch to move this by, for June twenty twenty-five, that way, to the board, I'm hoping to work with them, making sure that we do have more money, and be able to have a more open policy with them.
Thank you, Ms. Lobos.
If we are not angry or upset about this, then there's something wrong. These are two thousand, two, it's two thousand two thousand and eight. It's not just numbers and expressions, or a board. Two thousand dreams are being activated. Potentially over two hundred rent authenticators starting to displace for their jobs. And families struggling to try to figure out new places where to put their kids. Kids that have police checks for customers, and now are going to be granted with a restaurant on stage. We need to start being right now. Not wait, not wait until we get it right now. And I'm about to say, I was saying to the parents earlier this week, to demand that there was a plan, that we key down some more, because the families were not informed, and so that's, you must be like, that charter school never, completely, that is new. And also, the other one I mean there is that, yeah, they think they actually have public fund, public funds to run, for example, charter schools, but they run out of their own way. They don't seem to have the same guidance, the classroom, the critical thinking system.
Thank you. We're going to do lots of questions, also from the crowd, about the same topic. We talked a little bit about this at the start, but there is a long short on CPS. And there, whether it's this year with temporary solutions, like TIPS or busts, or loans or something else, there's a problem with the long term. And so, how do you go about securing resources for schools? And how do you work to build consensus? There are many about people who don't agree, or have severe viewpoints. How do you try to build consensus to attack this topic? And Ms. Lobos will start with you.
Thank you. I personally touch upon this, right? And looking at it at the long term, knowing that, looking right now at the budget, the local CPS, primarily, we need different resources for the community, we're looking at, right? We're looking at the local, we're looking at the state, and we're looking at the federal. The other level of funding is primarily to start certain, for example, Google, which, you know, the, the one. So it's, it's normal there. That doesn't mean that there is no room for having continued conversations. So going back to literally those conversations, to help bring in more funding at every level that we can, and then looking at other partnerships, right? And then seeing, and thinking about, how can we support our students right now, but also our students in those next ten, fifteen years? And continue with conversations of, you know, maybe some kind of a minister that might have a statement under state needs, as my district most often was, right? And continue conversations in partnership and collaboration, and with an equity stance, making the decent decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Lobos.
I was about first, and I made sure that we know that they were responsible, actually going to the final. Want to rather we start making improvements in funds, already at a local or state level. Because we need to make sure we're responsible for that money. That money is not free. Our taxpayers have been working very hard for it. And for us to be saying, we're asking for our city, or our state, or, you know, we need to be conscious that there's a lot of sacrifices that come with taking that money. Once we're able to figure out a tackle, exactly where we have to practice, that maybe it's not really providing, maybe, um, it's not working efficiently. Definitely go ahead and start working for, maybe, escape more, more of funding, more resources at the local and state level. You know, partnering up with, with our, our other nonprofits. And starting to look for more strategic ways that will secure, uh, the start of improvement of all of our CPS for the long run, matches for our run rate here for four or four years. So, you know, this is the base that is home, so they're facing pride, and they will not have to face the challenges that will occur.
Thank you. And bringing things a little closer to home here in this district. One issue that a lot of parents and community members talk about is travel. Just a simple way to get a student from school. It can be really frustrating, it can be dangerous, drop off, pick up. What would you do as a board member? What solutions do you have to encourage, ways to get to school that might not cause so much traffic, whether it's logging, finding, public transportation? Are there any factors beyond transportation that you need to solve to allow people to get to school safely? Ms. Lobos will start with you.
I don't think that you have a lot of saving passages, but this is not enough. Especially in our self-service Chicago, we do have a lot of clients. So we need to start incorporating some other more stricter measures to keep our kids safe, and also including our parents. Our parents can be more aware of what's going on in our cities, and our communities, where maybe there's something that happened Friday night that affect the morning for our kids. We need to be more in tune with the communication, and be able to listen to them. It was considered earlier this school, where all of us students were ready to feel something was going to happen. The staff was not aware of it. We did not show up to school, and the whole staff was completely perplexed of why, where was everybody? So this is an example of how we need to listen to our students, we need to listen to our parents, because they know exactly what is needed to face it. Sometimes, it's not so complicated that we might think. It could be a simple little thing, and we need to, we need to just listen.
Transportation has seen in any, any part of transportation in the city of Chicago, you know, there are barriers already that are looking at, even myself here, making my way into Coria. And in the fourth generation, I may do my own amazing, upon the community, amazing. That instead, we can, it's not quick, I don't have too much of this. We, how do we work with our local education, so our, next to track studies in the area, right? Also, looking at CTA, right, you're making that the orange line last seat up. How reliable is it? What else can we compare up with those CTA? And so hold it responsible to the time for anxiety to protect transportation. I actually had a conversation with a young person over the weekend, and we were talking about guidelines within the school rats, right? And how do we make those adhere in a subtle way? Because people told their communities, in particular, none of their schools were up. They, there's more white safety, but it's within that. And how, and this is not so big, more efficient or athletic, but also for the ability for a healthier activity with the families. The other that we should bet on, like, is the current bus shortage, the drivers, and the impact that's having on schools, in particular for a specification population that is, it's not kind of already.
Thank you. And once students do get to school, there are a lot of schools around the city that are missing a club program, and that goes for arts, music, sports, after-school programs. What would you do to secure funding and provide those in many schools, or all schools possible, in a sustainable manner, that they aren't the first thing that's caught on their mind of their funding? And Ms. Lobos will start with you.
You know, the schools, the schools are a different school. It's a community, that's how we need to approach that. We need to bring our schools to community and laws, right? But the obvious point could be more school programming. And that is where I think about my own experience, as a student, well, with sports, they fast forward stuff off. And then also working with the community, bringing in, adding school programs. I would say, whatever program, for example, the girls' hall, for a young woman who may be navigating multiple cultures, and going into high school. Or a young man, one has a stage space, a locker. You know, that's what they're asking, just a state, state space, especially in winter, to play soccer. So we got to be thinking about, how do we build those programs and enhance them? Their community create already nonprofits throughout the area, that maybe we can bring them in, into the school to provide the services, and actually programming. And let's not just stop the students, let's think about families overall. What other programs, for example, there be J.D., for our community members, be a solo classes, or other, you know, minority other. or other, you know, minority others, because that's hoping that can be found along the whole area. Let's see creative to be needed in this area.
Thank you, Ms. Villalobos.
I think as I said, that schools are more than just, uh, credit or smoothly. The other part of creating, we also offer more support. Uh, a second, try to partner with other pockets. We can also work with colleges and universities where we have new, uh, uh, students who are seeking to be educators, who are seeking to be parent directors, coaches, uh, you know, language, uh, 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 teachers. You know, there's studies that there's so many individuals who are always wanting to help. Uh, also our parents, we need to incorporate our parents who maybe, you know, they might be more proactive with the options that they offer their, for their kids, um, actually assisting culture rolling, you know? We want all this stuff for our kids, we can also work with, where around their parents where they, you know, help, they get a volunteer, you know? Obviously, everything that very, uh, safe setting, we have background checks, we, we teach a lot, I think, reporters. Uh, but at the top of all of this, we also have some cases that maybe are so inclined to do all this. Uh, whether we can have working parents, maybe for an after school year, we can perform with other companies that can provide style of care for our kids and also touring. Um, there's a lot that we can work with without always having to lower our budgets because there is people willing to, to help to serve our communities.
Can I ask you both a last question? What proactive steps would you take to make sure that these things do get in schools? Because they, I mean, I, I think a lot of people here would agree that all this is great, but it's missing for a lot of schools. So maybe in thirty seconds, what, what active steps would you do to get this done in school?
As I mentioned, working with the nonprofit that already exists, who are wanting to move their schools, which reminds our parents who are wanting to be more involved, that, you know, these that they can do to give the safety in first places, save for our kids. And also partnering with universities and colleges who are ready, having those kids meet those interestships, you know, who are wanting to have the heads-on experience, cynical without having to break our budget.
Feel it's, uh, two, two approaches here. We're looking at internally with the Chicago Public Schools, having those meetings, having meetings with the mayor chiefs, especially with this district, this area. And having also a conversation with the announcements, right? Because we need to buy everyone that's gonna be involved. Internally, we're looking at, uh, for me, we'll be building a, in a task force run by us where the leaders are experts and a comment and help get this moving along because it's not just for one person, this takes a whole community to get it done.
Thank you. And, uh, before looking for us, one final question, uh, we got also from the crowd about diverse learners, students with disabilities. There have been problems with CPS for almost a decade now with, uh, funding for diverse learners in the district over the past few years since higher law more special education teachers and special education classroom assistants. But what would your advocacy look like around making sure that schools have a way to serve these students? Which by law, they have to be served according to their individual identification. So, just what would you say?
That is one of my top priorities. Uh, one, it's also bringing in a personal experience. My youngest is eleven years old, he's also today. So first time we used to do short parties, we actually recently, he's with the Chicago Public Schools. We recently, what are they able to find, a different school that provided the services that he needs? And also a school that provided Spanish speaking, uh, just that word, Spanish speakers. The reason that we have my mom, who draws a map, takes a map, she's Spanish speaker. And she needed her community. So that's a priority. My mother, I mean, though, we, might not know why they pretty much are committing a special condition, but I think that there's more work than this to be done. We gotta look from the work one to the resources, how do we support the, not just students, but the teachers. And also, Keenan and I have a pretty, we bring a new cabinet because that's the area where we also see much relationship stick. That'll be bringing a new cabinet and a new team to work on with the families. And then bringing all the services to support the families at home. You know, for the child has, in my case, never had a nephew. But also getting awareness at the doors with the families where this is my priority because they don't have access to the resources that all they're doing in the stack.
Thank you. Ms. Villalobos.
Very much a reason why I said before, I navigate this without really having any, you know, understanding of where to begin or where to start. Um, and not just getting the support anywhere at school. Uh, this is unfortunately something that all of our parents face. They live for the school, they're asking for it, there's still a clear guidance of exactly what steps we need to take to get this support. So I would like to start there, making sure that we have a more clear way of our parents accessing this information and all the language possible for everyone that resides in our CPS schools. And, you know, being able to, uh, provide more, uh, more social workers, more contractors, more, more supporting needs that, you know, all of our schools already have. Um, trying to, uh, get the teacher to do all of these roles is quite a big, a very stressful thing. And, you know, I have a child who is almost three years old, with too many kids in the classroom. You know, large size class that is so small for all of our kids. Uh, so we need to acknowledge that and we need to be supportive with the teachers as well because the teacher also has life, they also have these going on. So we also need to be able to, uh, inform for these kind of assistance for them so that they can get better help and assist our teacher.
Thank you. And we're gonna go ahead and move on to closing remarks. Uh, you have ninety seconds, maybe final case to the voters here. Uh, Ms. Villalobos, what's your opinion?
With my candidacy, I'm honest in wanting to be able to be an advocate for all of our kids and not just restricting the help for some of the schools. I want to be sure that we can make our voice for all of our parents and all of our kids. And be able to write whatever changes that we make, have to be established for a long term, ten, twenty years from now. And we need to put all this politics, all this other private agendas aside because we don't pay for our kids, our kids are not huns. This is not a game, this is education. This is our city who's female that they, we need to make sure that we better it. What's happening in downtown, this is mostly all this violence. It's a blue compass, we did not gain our kids, our parents, the support that they needed with what they were asking for, over the capital. And we need to make sure that it's started to be more and supporting them. And if you can help me make it so that I will make sure that I continue this in the advocate.
Um, here before you ask me for your support, what I pretty much stand for is conspiracy, being accountable, and also making sure that, you know, the decisions are made regarding our students and our families. As to the previously earlier step, you know, are still here on like my taxpayers, our families in South West Side, or who has, they were trying to make a move, they were playing with God. That was my parents, neither the age yet, but they didn't. That's why we need to be accountable, how you spend the money. And when we see serving in the middle or networks where they are publicly, um, of misuse the funds. And now they're trying out their rights and letting the digital, being a political power. How do we say, ask ourselves, is this someone that we really trust? So for me, if we're accountable to the parents, it's a minimal thing. Our parents and our community are the most paid public funders that everyone pays. So let's continue with that and let's keep asking the questions. The other part again, I want to make sure is that this continues to be, this is an important forum, but more that we can continue discussing in other issues that unfortunately we're not able to comment this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Villalobos and I love you, Ms. Lopez.